Ready?
Yep.
Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. The time is 2:10 PM. I call the order of the City of Ocean Shore's Planning Commission meeting. Just to note that we have been delayed because we're struggling with the audiovisual issues. And it may be difficult to hear us as we now have to go back to sort of our old system instead of our new fancy system. We will try to speak as loudly as we can, but if you need to hear us, please try to interrupt and let us know. Richard, can you wave that you can hear us? Okay, thank you so much. So, do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Oh, roll call.
See?
I got yelled at.
I got yelled at. All right, I'm sorry, I will do the roll call. Dan Bricker here, Brian Bachman here, Thorn Ward here, Eleanor Dorman here, and I am here. All right, do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
In unanimous. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I didn't hear something. I wasn't here, so I couldn't vote. That's right, yeah, I forgot. Alrighty, so, public comments. We have a written public comment that we have not distributed. Everything's funny. The person that submitted the written comment is here. Would it be okay, Sarah, to ask, might have sort of summarized what was in her written comment? Could you do that, Maida?
Sure, I can do that, and it's Vida, no worries. So, I'm not sure why you didn't distribute it ahead of time. I'm not really prepared to give a summary, but I'd be happy to try to do that. The comments encompass a public hearing and the decision of the hearings examiner, as well as a site plan, and three or four pages of written comments. So, I don't know if I can actually give you a quote summary. Did you read it?
That's what I did, Maida, and I did not send it out because it was sort of not in time for the agenda. And that's probably my fault for not getting it out to everybody.
I sent it to everybody today.
What?
I sent it to everybody today.
We did send it by email to everybody. We just didn't print it and put it into the agenda package, so.
Okay, no worries. So, essentially regarding the 40% rule in all zones, I'm recommending that you use the maximum allowable building footprint to perform that calculation rather than the actual building that may have been submitted for a building permit. And I use it as an example, a recent conditional use permit, number 22-002, which was recently approved on July 5th by the hearings examiner, which appeared to comply with that 40% rule. But the problem with that particular project was that it used the actual building footprint rather than the maximum allowable. And so, when the calculation was performed, the coverage was only 18%. However, if one uses the maximum allowable footprint, that calculation comes out to be 44%, which is obviously over the 40% maximum. So, my recommendation is that the planning commission create legislative language that stipulates when that calculation is performed that you use the maximum allowable building footprint. The other thing I mentioned in my comments was, and this was particular to that project, but there are others that have been approved recently that I could give you examples of. But during the time that the staff put together their report, they didn't consider Ocean Shore's Municipal Code, Chapter 1750 dot 210. They did consider A, but they didn't consider D, which goes, which gives them the minimum footprint according to division and location. So, in my comments, I showed that during the staff report, they didn't even consider that section of the code. So, that project was not even evaluated as to 1750 to 10D. And that needs to be completed. I mean, those buildings should be marked as non-conforming going forward. And anyway, that's all in my comments. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
Vida, thanks. No, what we will do is, everybody has this, and we will not be developing and voting on any sort of change to the language this week. So, we'll have times to consider your comments as we incorporate and do what we need to do.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Official all public comments. Don Williams?
Yes, could you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I noticed that they now posted on the city FilePro system is your, is there's now a new PC, a planning commission manual dated August 23rd of 2022. Is that, is that the official version that you folks worked on over the summer and earlier? And also, that apparently that did not have to go through the city council. I thought these handbooks had to, but please confirm that that's the official one that's going to approve by the city, dated August 23rd, 2022. Thank you.
Yes, it is, Don. That's the official version.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Any other public comments? Richard, public comment?
No.
Good. Alrighty, on the applicability of the 40% law, I have a handout. It was an email we all received. Thorn, do you need a copy of it or do you keep one by yourself? So, we'll take one and send it around. The issue comes up that the 40% coverage of buildings, and we were, we had lots of discussion about the word building versus structure, and the applicability of that to all zones. So, Thorn has some notes, and we've seen his email. He sent that to us. The, what we're looking at is, and the most interesting part is applicability in B1 and B2 zones. That's really what I wanted to discuss today is sort of the feasibility of amending the language saying that it's applicable to residential zones only. That's kind of where we're at, Thorn, right?
Pretty much. I think the term dwelling versus building or structure is the problem.
When we did this, we were only talking about residential. So, if we made an error in getting into commercial, we need to fix that.
We need to fix that. And that was, and in fact, we've got an example where we've got somebody now doing a development running up against that, doing a storage unit, and he's basically gonna have to take off two or three storage units just to not include the 40% building. Building, but there was a, there was a conscious decision at the time, Thorn, so you know, to include permitted and non-permitted buildings in the 40% rule.
Right, remember that.
And so, the issue would be, if we leave the language building, but just add the word residential only, we should solve all of the issues related to, we're seeing right now that we're seeing. Anything on that, Marshall? Anything else to sort of add, what you can say?
No, that's, that was the unintended consequence of omitting the reference to residential zoning.
Yeah, and as we do that, we'll also look at the written public comment that you emailed everybody and look at seeing that. I'm still wrapping my head around what the comment is on as far as allowable versus actual. Because as I've read through it, it appears to be that the actuals were okay in this particular hearing examiner. But the issue is that the, we did not use the table allowable. We used the actual set of the allowable. I would assume that's what we need to work for. Marshall, any comments on that?
I haven't looked at the emails, so, no.
So, what do you all think?
Now, we're standing by its comment, which I haven't understood quite yet. If we simply reinstated the 1750 to 10 paragraph A, that would solve the immediate problem. Because that was the only significant thing we changed in that particular paragraph.
Right, but there was a specific intent to make not just the dwelling structure. Because what the, what the planning commission, the city council wanted to avoid was a whole group of buildings that in total were more than 40%.
Right, and that's where we get in trouble in commercial.
Right, and that's why we take commercial out.
Yeah, well, if we do that, then there's unintended consequences if we just change. Everybody thought about that, yeah, because dwelling, the term dwelling has specific meanings throughout the code. And the term structure has specific meanings too. And the term building has specific meaning. We're kind of mixing them together and kind of looking at one thing, but they really aren't.
No, and there was much debate and discussion about dwellings versus building. And at the time, I was new on the commission, but we decided to go with building intentionally and not with structure. Because the idea was to not have a lots, or not have lots out there that would have a dwelling structure that was, you know, 38% and then a separate garage. And you so quickly cover a good chunk of the lot.
The structure even, our code means driveway.
No, but we didn't do structures on purpose. Buildings are first. And left, and left driveways and other structures out of it. So, we believed that at the time, that the building definition was such that it was easy to work and interpret that none of the buildings, the issue will be non-permitted buildings that get done after the time. What do you do after the fact? Anything else on that?
There is a definition that buildings are included.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what we looked at, and I believe we were all in agreement. That's what we wanted to use. So, there was no sort of, we went round and round about structure versus building. And we felt dwelling was allowed people to put non-dwelling buildings up and exceed the coverage. Again, we will, next week, we'll look at taking a formal vote because that allows us to consider the public comment, the agreed removal of B1 and B2 and B3 from it. And then, if we need to, we can take a formal vote of changing dwelling to building. But we'll do that all next week, so if that's okay with you.
Well, that's fine. No, I didn't want to inhibit any permits that may be pending right now. Because when you, when you look at this thing, it's some buildings are 80% of the land.
Yeah, and those are all in commercial, yeah. That's definitely what we need to definitely do. That was never the intent to hit that. It's just missing it until you brought it up, and then Marshall told us that we had an actual issue. Okay, so we sort of went at it from there.
You bet.
All right, so that's, next week, we'll, we'll put something forward that we can actually vote on for a resolution. We've been going around this gateway corridor and permitted uses for a while. So, we're back to the, and you weren't here last week. We're back to the 2019 land use map and the comprehensive plan having a description of what's in the gateway corridor versus what we think is in the gateway corridor. And we've got lots of discussion about prohibition of residential versus existing apartments and all that sort of stuff. We understand this is sort of the vision in the future. What we want to do is clean up the gateway corridor. I think we're all in agreement that, that we'd like a better appearance in the gateway corridor. How we get there becomes the hard part. There's two pieces of this. One of it is, let's define what the gateway corridor is in scope. And then, go back to, and your agenda packet was a list of currently allowed permitted uses as well as intended uses, I guess would be the right way to call it, from the comprehensive plan. Then sort of look at, is there a discussion about creating in the code a new zone called Gateway Corridor? That's kind of where we're at. So, any discussion around the group? On pros and cons?
Some would be different than B1, B2. It would more specifically describe the type of allowed uses, is that, what the difference is?
I think what we talked about is it would, it would basically have, it would take residential levels and permitted use, specifically which is in B1 right now. If we took it out of B1 right now, we'd have an unintended impact of, there's a lot of B1 zones that have a lot of residential.
So, I just bought this area here.
In this area, specifically. We have the opportunity to define, as you look at the land use map, and I'm gonna send them around if you don't have yours with you. Oh, this is the, this is the zoning, this is the zoning map. And the land use map also here, and I'll send that around. We always have both. You got a land use map, and so we're gonna send two copies of the land use map that way if you don't have one. So, the intent was, and this was what the mayor was working with me on, is not just permitted uses. Looking at other things like finding some language for landscaping, finding some language to require construction of sidewalks, with new construction with the gateway corridor. So, not just, we started looking too much, not too much. We started looking at permitted and prohibited uses. But on top of that, we kind of starting toward looking at aesthetics. Sidewalks, landscaping, and the example he brought was, while the dollar store is not terrible, it's also not as pretty as it could have been with a little bit of work. Could have easily had a sidewalk went in there. I mean, when you stand there, and I, again, I drove by it again yesterday, you look at, Twin Star made an effort. They've done a little bit of landscaping, you know, they got some plants and everything. And right next to it is the same dollar store you can see in every town. That's always the same with the absolute bare minimum grass and a drainage ditch. So, the two things we really want, we want to look at is, what should be the extent of what we define as the gateway district? That one of the permitted uses, and then what we want to talk about, we don't want allowed to happen to them. What we want to do for the rest of appearances, things like, you know, no conexes, which I don't think that now, but still do. No overnight storage of construction materials and equipment unless it's an active construction site. Those sort of things that we can use to clean all that up. With that in mind, we also need to look at then, what, looking at this map, should be considered the gateway corridor. I mean, so, thoughts sort of on that? Start with you, Eleanor. What do you think?
I'd like to lay out the map.
Please go ahead.
And I think then we can draw a line on what we consider the actual gateway corridor. And then, we can see what's in.
Absolutely. Just go along, you know, the closed room, I think, on this side. We actually have a large dirty amount of things. So, in the land users, currently defined as the gateway corridor, all the way down Point Brown, just past Chance, it takes, you know, where Pizza Factory and Sunrise Drug and all that is, Sunset Drug. But interestingly, includes Ocean Shore's Boulevard, I guess, just past the Gitchigobi, right? Well, I can't call it Gitchigobi. It's only, you gotta be calling it. The ocean shores in, in the lots they're in. So, it basically is, it's, the Polynesian is where it stops. Because you have that first residential development after the Polynesian.
Yeah, so that's a good stop point. The question is.
Question is this.
Right. So, I think that we have to stop it somewhere in here. Is this why A stands?
This would be, you help me out, Marshall, with this, because I'm trying to think where this would be.
It's, the pink is the police, fire, and library.
No, here.
Yeah, well, this is the, see, at the end of incident, yeah, this is police, fire, library, and then the church is right here. So, this is the, what do we have, just south of us, the clinic. Clinic would be the first section in here. And then, the church, the Baptist church, I believe, they're in here.
I'm not sure. I'm now, the police fire is in here because there is the, there's the lot that goes over where you cross from the vault horse.
Yeah.
So, this is the crossing over to the 18th hole.
Correct.
So, that would be between, yeah, that would be between the church and, right here, the library.
The church is actually, that's, this is it here, right?
Yeah.
So, it's in this, in this tan color here.
Okay, and this is the library then, right here.
Yes.
So, it ends at the library.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, at the library and the building across the street, the Joe, whatever that is.
Yeah, James Building.
James Building.
Good, good end point, I think.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, there's still, there's still quite a bit that could be developed in this area here.
Yeah.
You want it to look like the rest of what's coming in. Do it make sense?
Cleaned up.
Cleaned up, yes.
That's, looking at the intent to clean up. Do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, that was, I think that was our intent.
Yeah.
The only issue, again, we'll go back to the present residential. There's one, they did a really good job of the Woodjarrow, but you know, someday it'll change, who knows? Then there's that one crappy apartment building across Mesa Storage Yard, next to the barber shop.
Yeah.
And that really, I'm okay if that gets zoned out and not being repeated personally.
You don't talk at all? Yeah.
Well, you can change anything all but not.
Like Thorn said, how should we do?
You gotta have the plan.
Well, and I think that this stuff, I still think that this stuff out here, this is all residential out here.
No.
I mean, and a lot of it, there's, there's a lot of residential, Ocean Court, all of this.
Yeah, that is.
That's what I'm talking about. But on this part, I'm talking about this, you're right, I'm talking about.
Yeah, this hall, I think there's very little, first floor residential. There's a couple, second story.
There's a couple in there. And it's being used as a transient rental right currently.
So, you know, for the time being, we're stuck with that, where I still think that's, that is a great plan to encompass this area, then excludes this.
Excludes what we call a business. We'll have to address that at a rather, because this is our prime, one of our prime apartment areas right now.
And hopefully, at some point in time, they'll be parking for these buildings back in here, I would like to see. And keep the parking off the main street. But, you know, we have what we have.
We have what we have. So, I think, in a great, Thorn, do you sort of see an issue with coming basically to here with a gateway?
Right.
It's already appropriately zoned in, right?
It's what?
It's already appropriately zoned in.
It's on B1 right now.
Yeah.
And the language play sort of called it something different as we were working on the comprehensive. It is, okay. Basically matches the code. We're not that far off, except we missed this piece here, no, sorry. So, is there a discussion about creating a gateway zone? Is that really what we're looking at? Is there anything left B1? I guess what we're doing is, we're carving out a more restrictive.
B1.
B1 is really what we're doing.
Is there room to just give it a different name? And we don't want to burden areas around there, but we certainly want to restrict what can happen in that immediate downtown zone. Do you see any problem with?
Kind of depends on what the uses are.
Pardon?
It kind of depends on what we're limiting.
Well, we haven't gotten into that now, yet, but.
But sort of what will be, be pressing next.
Do we want to separate this up? And if we say yes, we go, how do we want to define this?
That's basically what I'm saying. And these are the areas where there'd be things like, you know, the simple stuff, like any new construction that'll require enhanced landscaping and sidewalks.
There's a lot of zoning overlays many cities have, or something like this, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Exactly.
It's not, it's not radical to ask something along these lines that we sort of want it more restricted, which meets the goals and that everybody has. Because there are a few, you know, we've got our favorite eyesores along the way. And this sort of prevents them from recurring.
If we were to require sidewalks in that area, do you see a problem with saying, we're not going to force the businesses that are there now to do it, but if they change hands, they have to change hands, knowing that they have to put in sidewalks?
As a condition of sale, current, under current?
But I'm not sure, Zari, I think it would be, one of the things we talked about would be, new construction or major renovation would require construction of a sidewalk, not just sale. Condition of sale becomes quite hard to make that a condition.
I don't even understand what you guys are talking about sidewalks. You're talking about down Point Brown?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you're gonna, you're required, that if somebody builds something on Point Brown, so you're gonna require sidewalks piecemeal?
That's very common in lots of cities, yeah.
That is the only way you got it done.
The only way to get it done. If somebody does major construction or new construction.
And you can define the area based from the property line, where those sidewalks.
And that would be city engineered up, you know.
Yeah, there will, there will have to be a construction standard created for sidewalks. And if you develop a piece of property or redevelop a piece of property within one of those areas, then, then those design standards would, would come.
Are already prehyped.
Who owns the sidewalk?
It's, it's, most cities I've seen, I've been, I've actually had to do it in residential construction where if you want to develop your residential block, you have to build a sidewalk in the easement.
Yeah.
On the right away.
What?
On the right away.
I've lived in an area where the homeowner actually had to put in a sidewalk. The city was the owner. But you have to keep it up, and you have to shovel snow off of it, and you were responsible for it.
It's, it's not uncommon.
It's very common.
Very common in most, and it's, it's a fairly, it's not, it's radical to this town, but it's definitely not radical anywhere else. And you would have to basically create, like you said, a, an architectural design standard for what a sidewalk at Ocean Shore's would look like in a commercial, in the gateway district. And that any major renovation or new construction would require you to build a sidewalk.
And you could have that all clearly laid out where it would be, but we don't have it here.
Well, no, real, right, you'd have to.
Curbs and gutters too, right?
Well, well, that's, that's where it gets complicated if you're gonna do it one, one at a time is when you start talking about storm drain, curb, and gutter that goes along with sidewalks. And depending on what the alignment is, that kind of thing. It's, it's a, it's a complicated discussion from a design standpoint.
It is.
Which is something we were asked to look at too.
Yeah. By the way, the mayor basically said, why don't we have, like most cities do, a requirement that if you're doing new construction or major renovation in the downtown district, we have to build sidewalk?
There's also a common thing in this type of situation where sidewalks are simply put in and the price is allocated the way they were all allocated for the street lid. We were just told how much we were gonna pay.
Well, we, we, we talked about this extensively, and I, I haven't, I'm not, I'm not against sidewalks though. But Point Brown is major developed. And so, there's very few lots where now you're gonna have a sidewalk. And so, it's not gonna look very good. And I don't see people doing major renovations where they gotta put in a sidewalk. So, unless the city decides they want sidewalks and puts in sidewalks everywhere.
I think that's why things like the, the street lid, where everything in front of your property, I certainly don't help that road, but I certainly paid for it. And that may be the route you have to take to get the job done.
Well, that was, that was when they had a big thing on the sidewalk. They failed.
No, I.
There's, there's an additional complication to the, to the Point Brown corridor and sidewalks and curb and gutter is you've got existing utilities there that are not easily moved. You've got, you know, your main power runs and things like that running down through there. You have a sewer line that still needs to be run down through there to get the services outside of the city, out of the ditch, which is a discussion that has popped up on occasion. So, it's, it's not just about having one person developing. So it's, it's not just about having one person developing a piece of property, you know, kind of like Dan's talking about. Where you're gonna have, um, you know, he's gonna have to relocate a major power line. And, and the discussion was to try to take it from overhead and get it underground. Grace Harbor P U D wasn't really looking at wanting to invest in that, so there's some expense there that has to be taken into consideration. Um. The wholesale L I D concept, um. You know, starts to look more attractive when you talk about the scope of putting sidewalks in the downtown core.
You know, I think it needs to be a council discussion in that I think. Most people would like to see sidewalks downtown. You know, whether it's for ourselves or for tourists or accommodation. I think everybody could agree that it's not safe to walk down Point Brown. And, you know, I think the city needs to discuss. Our sidewalks, the responsibility of the landowners on that area of the street. Um, or is this something that the whole city should pay for? Uh, is a lid which is very unpopular right now, but I think there's some decisions need to be made by the council. All we can do is lay out a zone and put both suggestions, I think.
Go ahead, Marshall. One of the complications with an L I D, um. Is the property that's being assessed has to, there has to be a benefit assigned to that property. So you couldn't do an L I D for the downtown core and assess somebody down in the residential area that has no benefit showing on their property. So, yeah. L I D law will complicate that.
Yeah, you have any other questions?
Attention to that.
What's that?
Uh, we have a, like a business improvement district where they have an L I D, just to think that only the people that are paying.
Yes, exactly. That would be an option. Uh, you know, the L I D could, uh, could be set up like a utility, uh, L I D, a U L I D. Um, where only the people benefiting from sidewalks or streetscape improvements would be assessed.
But I think if we concentrate on zones and make that suggestion along with it to the council.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of what I, what, I mean, that's just one thing that came up. And he just, it was brought up by the mayor because again, he saw an opportunity when we put in. The, uh, dollar store, if we have a requirement, that would have been a nice stretch of sidewalk.
Yeah.
And that little park, so now people are walking to the dollar store either in the.
There's been one piece of sidewalk that. But it sits there and goes nowhere. I think, I think sidewalks piecemeal doesn't make any sense. I think it makes more sense. To come up with a comprehensive plan and engineer the whole, the whole, I mean. Go all the way down Point Brown, take out the median, put sidewalks on, on, on the side, have parking on. On the street. But that's a, that's a huge project.
It was.
How many million was it last time, Marshall?
Twenty-two.
Yeah, how much? Twenty-two, twenty-two million?
That we had grant for.
That we had grants. That we had a grant for and we didn't do it, how do we do it?
But a good chunk of it.
And we lost the grant because we couldn't come up with matching about where the streets cost to do.
Should we then concentrate on the, the zone we choose? Um. Uh, the landscaping requirements.
I think that's part of what we could definitely look at. Is this.
If we move it forward.
Exactly. I mean, come up with some, and I'll, I'll volunteer to look at somebody if some city has, has a, again, that becomes an architectural standard for. Do we have anything in now for landscaping requirements in commercial?
In the, in the parking areas, yeah. It's limited, um. And it's really hard to enforce because it's not really specific.
Okay. Would you recommend something more specific if we're looking for?
Let me look at it and, and I'll, and I'll comment.
Okay. Uh, I mean, I think that's definitely something we should, we can look at is something in the way of some landscaping and just because. Something's gonna happen, we're gonna get another dollar store, it's gonna go away, it's gonna do the absolute bare minimum and be ugly.
And it's a missed opportunity.
It's a missed opportunity there to do something and it, and just because it's sitting next to the Twin Star, I made an attempt. So that's the point, but you know, they, they make an attempt there at least where. People around the dollar store have no interest and desire to do anything.
One thing that really hurt the. Big plan from last two years ago, by the way, was that many businesses today use. The right way, not as part of their parking, but as access and interest and request. To the parking area without channeling it because they didn't have room to do it. And in my case. When we did an S one on. Sidewalk was like, it was only fifteen thousand dollars per hundred feet, wasn't a big deal. But all the other stuff that goes along with it, that's what costs the money. If, uh. And maybe where. When you think about modern, modern planning, you see an awful lot of cities who are eliminating parking requirements. For whatever reason, it may be something applicable about here because right now we have parking rules that require. Parking for every possible highest and best occupancy that building, for instance. I'm required to have twenty-two parking, twenty-eight parking spaces. For a business that rarely has more than half of those being run at any one time. Well, that's not a sill, but that's what our rules basically say now. And those kinds of things make you use too much good land. For parking spots which you'll never use.
Worst case scenario, they set you up for worst case scenario.
Yeah, as if it ever happened, it would never occur. You know, like we, we have so much land that's been dedicated to parking, we don't use. That it. It doesn't make sense to me, but.
You just need more agents and more clients for your building.
Well, it's either that or, or let each business solve that parking problem on their own somehow.
Not particularly determining that because obviously. You need less parking than, uh, the liquidation stall, for example.
I think it's based on the building, in your case, isn't it?
It's based on how many people you have working for you and plus staff, in our case.
Okay. And a lot, and a lot of your people are part trying to, or are out of the office.
Well, they're not there, we don't have as many, or we, you know, we're stuck with that thing.
Yeah.
And then there's always people like the liquidation outlet who don't have enough parking.
And if they don't have enough, what do the people do? Well, they figure out a way to, the owners of the company. They figure a way to solve that themselves. They don't have parking, you can't park on the street. Frankly, I think that's their problem, certainly not ours. But that's just my thing. I mean, in Seattle, they've eliminated, uh, parking for large apartment units. My daughter has one on the corner, got fifty units. Uh, no parking in the building at all. Of course, you're gonna, you're gonna spot size as table, there was, yeah. So maybe, and that's, that's more the, more modern type zoning thinking, especially like in Los Angeles where. They've just allowed, increased eighty or California. They've authorized eighty unit, eighty U units, many, many places without commensurate parking to match it because they figure that's their problem.
Yeah, but that's how you end up with all this parking on the street.
Well, you have, if you don't have street parking legal, then it's, again, you put in a driveway on, on your own money. To your own property, do it. Don't depend on the city provide parking for people.
I mean, is I threatening for the parking police?
Yeah.
I, I really think the answer, and I don't know whether we forget it. On Point Brown and Ocean Shores Boulevard is to have land behind the buildings for parking.
Some do, some don't right now.
Oh, city parking where, you know. There's a lot that concerns your building, of your building.
Well, we can, we can, we can have, uh, parking agreements between one of those, I shouldn't quote lots for that, and I think on limited days.
Your uses.
Yeah, we have all, like, my business opened any day with the restaurant, but my kind of thing, yeah, lots of those kind of cooperative arrangements. But many businesses that put their parking on their front. As you did in sixty, seventy. Better than having it back, but what are you doing with the building and what are you doing?
So we should get back to, do we want to zone this?
Yeah, I think there's a general consensus, and again, we'll vote next week on that. What I'd like to do is if we go to the. Page. Next month, yeah, because the power won't be meeting in two weeks. We go to page nine of the agenda packet, you'll see this. Um, this is Richard's famous comparison table that actually serves a use for it very well here. And it basically what's currently in the V one. And if you sort of look at the same time. I included just after this. What's in, what's the actual current V one zone. What's interesting is, which will get to some other people in Scotland, page eleven of the agenda, the agenda packet. It's whatever the agenda was today. I know we have too many papers today.
I must not have printed that on.
Here we go. Luckily. Sir, always print extra.
That, that support years.
Yeah, so what's missing on Richard's, what's missing on, on the, on the stolen from Richard's page nine, and I went to page eleven. The first three permitted uses, one family, two family, and multi-family dwellings. If you go to page eleven of the agenda packet. So. What we suggested in. The comprehensive plan was the Gate A district only allow residential on the second floor. So. I, I would like to have that discussion one more time. Uh, to make sure. Looking at what we've now decided.
That's it, that's what we started with.
No, so what, what wasn't included in the, in the permitted use table. Was one family, two family, and multi-family dwellings, which is a permitted use right now. In the business district. What we had talked about at length in the comprehensive plan, and we've talked about it here. Is in this gateway district saying second story residential only.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I think, didn't Richard do what was in the, this is his current plan?
No, this is the current zone.
What? Well, he didn't put any.
I think.
I think it's more the conflict.
This may be the conflict.
Yeah, because I saw.
And, and that's what we never got, we never got to rewrite the code.
To about. The comprehensive plan.
Yeah. And the discussion we had at length in the comprehensive plan was. Well, it's typical uses. Gateway corridor. Commercial developments, retail service, restaurants, hotels, hotels, residential, mixed use or social members. That's on page five of the.
Right.
Agenda package. Assembly, government, silly plans, recreational. We've got wrapped around the missing real estate and some other things, medical services and personal services. Which were listed in the service professional area, but there was a big discussion here that this should be allowed in the gateway.
You may, the gateway quarter was broken up into two sections, but one, what's on Point Brown?
Yep.
And that's, that's the typical use, the gateway quarter, and then what is on the side streets of the gateway quarter, there is a profession.
Right. But the discussion we had at length, we have a public comment, are you, go ahead. Richard?
I just want to clarify, when I created that chart, I took those off of the, uh, uh, existing zoning codes.
Yeah, that's from the zoning, not the, you're right, Richard, that's what I thought. So the intent here was to look at what's in the existing zones. Versus, that's why I put all of this in here. Versus what was in, what's in the comprehensive plan gateway corner. And what I think we had discussed at length was. There are some. They're, they're not specified in the comprehensive plan, but the group sort of was getting to a consensus that. Real estate and professional services should be okay to the gateway car. Don't gateway park, and maybe we should call it something other than gateway to not conflict with the comprehensive plan.
Well, that's right, I, I, I kind of disagreed with being on point ground because like. Repair, auto repair, we definitely did not want those on point.
Right, no, and we, we definitely didn't. And but there was specifically real estate, banking, medical services and personal services.
Yeah, I go along with that.
There was a discussion of those four specifically should be allowed. On the major point round.
Yes.
Because, you know, you've got the dentist, you've got the vet. I mean, you've got that sort of stuff now.
Yeah, the, when we were doing it, the, the consensus was to move them off, but, but I don't necessarily agree with that.
Okay.
I agree more with what you're saying, they should be on.
They should be what?
They should be on point.
They, they, they should be allowed on point round.
Yes.
Because they are, they are, they're not a detractive ugly use.
Right.
And by excluding. Excluding, and we'll go back to, I'm gonna go back to page five because it's hard to go between the two, by excluding auto services, contractors, repairs. I guess restaurants should go back on point round too, or on the gateway.
No, that's not.
Definitely. But not allowed on the gateway corner, should be auto services, contractors, repair, mini storage, long-term vehicle storage. And that's it, because commercial residential's sort of already covered above. Residential mixed use with retail run development.
Yeah.
So. If we. Would, and we'll vote next week on including those in the use. So I'd like to go back to page nine. To make sure there's nothing in here from B one. Because we're using different language in the zoning code than we are in. The, in the comprehensive plan. Use. So I think we would take out light equipment rental.
We would probably take our hardware stores.
No, I don't think so.
You know, A's looks really good, except for the storage area. I hope they're gonna grow some.
Yeah, they're, they're, we hope so. So really, it'd be just light equipment rental, which probably is a current use, we would say isn't appropriate. So should we, I guess the question is, should we, as we suggest creating a gateway. Car zoning area, should we start moving towards using comprehensive plan language or the old zoning? This is the real question, I'd like to have some discussion on that. Starting with you, Daniel, you have a thought on which is better language or?
Well, no. I don't know which one would be the better language. Go ahead. Um, because the, the zoning codes weave definitions and terms through the entire code. It may be easier to, to use the zoning codes and use that language in the comp plan. Um, you know, shifting that way as opposed to. Bringing the comp plan language into the zoning.
Completely on the state, because it's cross-referenced throughout.
Yeah, yeah, then there's ordinances that go back decades using that, those references.
That works. Yeah. So is there anything in B two? Back to page nine, I don't see anything, we can all look at this and bring it up, I don't see anything in there. That. That's below the line that we would want to include in the gateway. Nothing.
We don't have any B two in gateway anyway.
What? No, what I'm saying, I just want to make sure there's not a use in B two that we're saying belongs in the gateway district. I don't think there is.
Uh, jewelry shops.
Yeah, but that's already in there. It's already in, that, what, what, what we're saying is we'll take. We'll keep the existing B one in the gateway, we'll get rid of residential. And then look to see if there's anything from the comprehensive plan that needs to be added.
And gateway is. Uh, separate from, uh, uh, search professionals.
Search professionals will stay B one.
The pink is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you look at that, that would basically stay. B one. Under the current B one zone, is what we're proposing.
Okay.
And. In the current, basically the only difference.
And then that makes exceptions for the existing residential that's in.
Well, we would, we would, we're not, we're not changing the B one, we're currently allowed residential, single family, multi. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, that's, that's not why, but what we're really. Uh that's, that's not why, but what we're really trying to address is. Again, the appearance of getting a good-looking gateway and creating a special business district, whatever you want to call it. We'll call it the gateway districts, our usual comprehensive plan. And going through that.
We have a, we have a cattle in B. We have a cattle sort of in B one, like a. Not sure what, I think it's a dog grooming salon or anything.
Uh yeah, dog groomer, yeah, any cause, yeah. Okay, um that's not, I wouldn't call it a kennel. No, I don't think they're over.
No, they, she, she doesn't overnight, but she does uh dog grooming, cat grooming and stuff like that.
What's the one up on the corner, way from the corner, is that, is that still there, next to Poplin?
Yeah.
There was one there too. Um I, I think that was a day, like a dog daycare as well, I don't think that was an overnight. Um I'm, I'm not certain if they're still there though.
And if they were, it'd be an illegal use anyways, because it's. It's not permitted use of B one. Three two, so, alright, so that's sort of. Done and dusted. The last thing is, did we give everybody a copy of? I know I've got way too much stuff over here, the. Email that Marshall got about our AD code and regulation of.
I brought everybody a copy.
Oh, here it is.
Talking about the email.
Hello, city planner email? Yes, this one is, this one's gonna be fun, I'm gonna ask everybody to read it quickly. It starts out with hello, city planning director, so I guess you weren't the only one to receive this. Nope, I don't believe so. This one is. Gonna be on the agenda next week also. Um I don't. Marshall, what are you looking at us to do, just to inform the mayor that he's got an issue?
Yeah, I think it's, it's probably gonna spur a revision to current code.
Right, but is it art? What is the planning commissioner's role, just coming up with a?
I just wanted you guys to be aware of that because the discussion, uh Thorn brought the discussion up.
We've talked about it many times, that it's been a no-go. In the current. Regime, basically doesn't, did not want to consider this.
Well, now they have to.
Now, now they have to.
Right around our hands and hand cities too.
Yeah, at this point. So are you looking at us to, I mean, what would we do for code change, basically? Strike it?
I don't understand this. What would? Require and they only be related occupants have anything to do? With ADU?
Go ahead, what are you, it's a true.
Our current code requires ADU surrendered only to relatives or caregivers.
Right.
Not anybody else.
Yeah, and I think that's good.
That's a violation of this, it's illegal, because the state has not made that illegal.
Can't limit it.
On what grounds?
They don't have any grounds, they're the state.
A grounds during the state.
Call the gun. The only limitation here is that we're not rooms.
So basically, we have a. The city has a problem and they're not in compliance with state law. State law says you can't restrict, now, we also have a problem is we say there's only so many dog family members that can reside in a home, in our code. I believe is what they're applying to.
Yeah, but they haven't redefined family, God knows what we do with that.
Well, but there's, but there are a couple places where it's an issue at times, I know boarding houses or, that are sort of being used. As boarding rooms. Um so, we, we've always, this is sort of to prevent. Informal boarding houses is what the city code had. Is one I know on Santer.
We, we allow boarding houses too.
If, if it's a legal boarding house, that's, you just can't let people live for free.
Right.
In your house, only if they're not your family members. You also cannot get the whole ADU thing. So do you want? Well, I'm basically, what do you see the planning commission doing, Marshall? That's what I'm asking you, I know this, you're asking me to take the heat for you?
No, I, I think we need to present it to the council, um. For, for what it is, we have a non-compliant code that exists in our current municipal code that needs to be changed to reflect. What. What the RCW says.
Does anybody have any printouts of what that code looks like or where?
I have it all the straight.
This is brand new to everybody.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't given this much thought, I haven't even read the RCW to see what it actually says, if there's any other types of limitations. I see this as something similar to like when the, the city or municipalities had restrictions on manufactured housing and stuff like that. It, it had on its face the appearance of, you know, discrimination. Based on the type of construction or whatever, and, and so. Th- this may be something that follows a similar, you know, we're discriminating against people that have no family. Uh in their ability to rent their ADU out.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. Um and we, we've looked at this code before, the ADU code, it's very simple.
Yeah, um I don't think there's a lot of code change that needs to happen, we just need to, you know, get rid of the restriction for family members or caregivers and. And leave it as a long-term rental.
Yeah, it has to be a long-term rental.
Yeah, it would have to be long-term.
They're all, they use all, yeah, we don't change anything for trade.
You've got a multi-unit dwelling. And in our one district.
You have an additional dwelling unit. Attashed to, associated with a single family home.
Right.
So what's the difference?
Well, you, you can't build two homes on one lot unless you're, unless it's zoned for. What we're talking about is somebody's got a mother-in-law over, over a garage and the state is now telling us. That we can't require that they rent that out to a family member only, now they can rent it out long-term to anybody.
We have that, that's my whole point, right, example, there's, there's a home born up on our street. That they have a completely separate home being built on the lot. Called for a mother-in-law. And what you essentially have are multi-dwelling units. Um that I don't think belong in an R one district.
So by code, an accessory dwelling unit, which is what you're talking about, is allowed, but the size of that second structure is limited. Based on, yeah, it, well, the, the size of the structure is, is limited based on the size of the original structure. There can only be a certain percentage, and, and I don't know if it's, you know.
It's a pay-per-hour square feet. Forty, forty percent of the size of structure.
Yeah, I think I've read it once. It is a legal use in today's residential zone.
Well, we've already, we, the other trucks we have is to outlaw ADUs.
Be fine with me, but I guess it wouldn't be fine with people that have them.
One could say that.
I would agree, that would cause. Significant issues of our video.
But this is also becoming part of a trend, and especially in, in California where the legislature has taken over a lot of local zoning issues. And proclaim that they're the arbiters of what you can do.
Well, I'd hate to model myself off California.
Well, me too, but if Washington's already doing it, here's a quick example, this is what California did two years ago.
I survived this in Portland where. You know, additional dwelling units became a huge issue there, they, they basically.
California's a million, million housing units short, like you say, and this is the only solution they have.
This is really seen as a formal housing option, even though we can't use the word formal housing in Ocean Shores. California is gonna water, so. So. I guess what we could do is, is I could. I'll, I'll go ahead and do it later, if Marshall wants to, but we both can look at it, is draft the change to the code, we can vote out it. Whenever we meet again, this, this doesn't have to be done like immediately.
No.
Because the council was in no big hurry to do any. Any sort of.
I know they didn't want to do any code revisions before the year was out, get through the budget and kind of get that off their plate.
We just sent out to the city attorney, let him take the.
That's what I was gonna say. I was wondering, let's just go to the city attorney and take it off of us, or?
Yeah, this was more of an FYI to the planning commission because it was gonna involve a, a change to the municipal code, so.
In other words, we don't have to work on it, somebody already did.
Basically, you are, that was my first thought, is can the city attorney take it?
It, it may be that um. Maybe you give this to Scott and then he can assign that, or, or the council can assign that to the city attorney. That's not like probably a pretty good pathway.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll get it to Scott, or you want to forward it to him?
I can forward it, if you want.
Okay, either way.
Because I'm sure that, like you said, other cities have already.
Does Brett work with other cities as well?
Yeah, he works with the city of Young.
Okay, so maybe they've already, maybe he's got language that already.
Yeah, I mean, so this is gonna become, after the first year, a great council debate over outlawing ADUs. I, I understand, I know where it's gonna go. So, that's fun, do we have any further discussion? Oh, what's in now? Future meeting date, so we're actually not going to have a quorum. On October twenty fifth. So the next meeting after that would be, can you count it out?
November fifteenth.
Last year.
November fifteenth.
Yeah, twenty.
B W C, our insurance, yeah.
So, the next meeting would be. It's the second, right? The second.
Second Tuesday.
So that'll be the eighth.
Eight.
Yep. So the next meeting will be November eighth at two P M. And I have my handy dandy note taker, and that would be Thor. You've got it on the eighth. Yes. And the other thing on scheduling is, we won't have a. Meeting two weeks after that because there's, that's the Thanksgiving weekend, traditionally, we don't meet Thanksgiving week. I don't think. This building isn't used for election.
Well, then we did to the amount of meetings within half the form of the end of the, yeah, I'd hate to see us cut out another one. I think we should do the eighth regardless.
Oh, the eighth regardless, definitely the eighth, but the following, we should do the twenty second. Okay, definitely the eighth, because we need to hammer on some of this gateway district stuff. And that could be four weeks to work on it and get some help. Alright. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?